I'm Damon Mayby, Commission President.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Daphne West, City Commissioner.
Good evening, I'm Commissioner Trent Tidwell.
And please Dan, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're very honored this evening to have our very own Metro Councillor here with us, Carlotta Colette. And Carlotta, please come forward. Glad to have you here. I think they should both be...
There's a green light on that, that should be a good sign.
Yep. We're a green city, so.
That's right. After being moderately chastised last time for not visiting you frequently enough, you're going to be seeing way too much of me now.
Well, I don't think so.
Just open the door and I'll just come plowing through. I want tonight to... I wanted to come in personally invite you to a series of workshops that we're having at Metro. And not just you, Mayor Norris and Commissioners, but also your Planning Commissioners, your Neighborhood Leaders, the people who help you make decisions about the future of your community. And I'm leaving that to you guys to figure out who that is. But I really want to see the people in our district represented in the next several months of huge decision-making that we'll be doing at Metro, at the county, and with our county partners at Mount Noma and Washington County. There's a quote at the beginning of this that I just... This is a new thing I'm going to hand out to you. And that just came out today and I hadn't seen it before. And the line at the beginning is, "We can only see a short distance ahead, but we see plenty there that needs to be done." And that encapsulates what we're trying to accomplish in the next several months. As you all know, we're looking at a million new people in the region by 2035. And there are a lot of different numbers running around, some by... To 2050 or, you know, 50-year forecast. The bottom line is, a lot more people coming to our community, a lot more jobs, and the need to find ways to incorporate them into our communities. And in the past, that was something that Metro did largely on its own. I mean, we had big public processes, but nothing like what we're trying to do now. This has to be a collaborative process. And we really need you at the table. We need you as Commissioners, we need your planning staff, Planning Commissioners, Neighborhood Leaders. We need to hear from the people in our region of what your interest is, who you want to see in your communities, how many people you think you can house, what kind of jobs you think you can bring to the community. And we'll have several opportunities over the next couple of months. This is all part of, as you've seen these before, this is the latest and I'll give you a copy, that this is all part of making the greatest place. It's really, how do we accommodate a growing number of people? And as you know, it's Metro's job by state law to figure out how many more people and what kind of employment lands we need in our region. And so it's... And we have roughly a year and a half now to complete that process. The piece we're in right now, between now and December, is we're calling this Framing the Choices. We've done some scenarios of what are the transportation priorities? What are the infrastructure priorities? We're just beginning to get preliminary results. We'll have some of that to present at each of this series of meetings coming up this fall. The first one is October 8th. And it's really important that you be there. This is the regional forum. It's the big meeting. It's where we have a guest speaker, and actually Mayor Norris and Metro Councillor Rex Burkholder are kind of the hosts. This is... It began as a joint JPAC, the Joint Policy Action Committee on Transportation, Advisory Committee on Transportation, and MPAC, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. It was going to be just those two committees meeting jointly. But as we got into the planning for it, we realized how important it is to have a really big group of people helping us do the thinking on these issues. So that meeting is October 8th, from 4:00 to 7:00, at the Oregon Convention Center. It's free.
But it's not at Metro.
Nope. We hope it'll be too big to be at Metro, frankly. We hope it'll be very large. And the guest speaker, keynote speaker, will be Chris Nelson, who is the Presidential Professor at the University of Utah, an authority on urban sustainability. And I personally have not heard him speak. A lot of people have, and they... He comes very highly regarded, and so I think it would be very good to hear what he has to say. But we'll also be hearing from Mayor Norris about some of the plans you have in your community, from Mayor Craig Dirksen from Tigard, and Mayor Tom Hughes from Hillsborough. Kind of what are some of the... A couple of the things that you... Big projects that you're trying to do, how you think you can do them, whether you think you can do them, who you need as partners. And then we'll have a panel toward the end of the day to kind of feed back what we think, what they think, with these panel members. And there'll be people like Ethan Seltzer from Portland State and others who can kind of help you build the partnerships and the paths you need to get to the goals you're after. So that will be the first meeting. And that's the real kickoff for this series. And then the next meeting will be a joint JPAC/MPAC meeting at Metro, unless we find that it also will have grown. That will be October 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00.
And is that one we... You want just the mayors, or you want us to all be there for that one too?
I think if you're all there, the more the better, frankly. This is where we'll be rolling out the first series of scenarios that we're testing of, if we don't expand the urban growth boundary, what does that tell us in terms of our ability to achieve the regional goals that many of you helped us formulate? We've kind of narrowed it down to six, and I can't rattle them off. But they're basic, you know, how do we be green? How do we not contribute to global warming? How do we build walkable communities? How do we have vibrant employment? We've looked at these six goals, what we're calling our Outcome-Based Planning Process, and we've said... We've run some scenarios. If we don't expand the urban growth boundary, does that help us reach our goals? If we put more or less money into infrastructure, does that help us reach our goals? So we're getting some results, and we'll be presenting that and having a conversation with you all at that October 22nd on the land use and infrastructure piece of those scenarios. Then on November 12th, we'll be looking at the transportation scenarios, transportation planning, and what kinds of results we're finding from that. If we invest in transit versus roads, what does that do in terms of helping us achieve our goals as a region? And then December 10th will be kind of the bringing it all together, making some choices. And that's... I think that there we'll probably have that push-button opportunity for you to actually vote. Not that your votes are going to count a whole lot, because it's only the first quarter of a planning process. But we want to be able to get a sense of what people feel we ought to be doing. Because next year is going to be intense. We have to look at the urban-rural reserves process, transportation planning, infrastructure planning. We've got a whole lot to be talking about. And as your district representative, I don't want to be in there speaking for you. I want you to be with me. I want my district to be really well-represented. So I'm coming out here just to personally invite you. And as I said, you as the commission, your Planning Commissioners, your Neighborhood Leaders, whoever you feel helps you make the decisions, please invite them.
And candidates, I believe we also put on the list. All the candidates running for office as well.
And candidates, absolutely. I mean, if you're running for any office, and anybody out there watching this on TV, if you're running for an office in this region, or probably even in the state, this would be a great opportunity for you to get a sense of how the community is planning to grow, how the metro planning process works, how the counties are working together, how the cities are working together, and great networking.
Carlotta, just a little piece of advice. If you're talking about candidates, you might want to leave out the "votes don't count" portion.
Right.
Unless you're talking to people in Florida, you might not want...
Exactly. So that's what I wanted to say. I wanted to invite you. And I can answer any of your questions, or if I can't answer them, I can get you answers.
You have handouts also.
And I do have handouts, you bet.
Yeah. Commissioner Neely.
I was just wondering if the invitation is going to be extended out to CPOs and Hamiltons who are adjacent to the...
Absolutely. Absolutely. We really want the... It's a broad list. We've... We're casting a broad net. We want, you know, all the minds we can bring to play on this. Any other questions?
No. We'll see you there.
You bet.
Thank you very much for bringing that information.
And thank you for the updates that you've been giving us. It's appreciated.
So here's the actual invitation.
Okay.
This is the list of the other meetings.
All right.
This is just an update on what's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass it down. Thank you very much. And next, we have a presentation. Actually, it's a presentation redux. But I'd like to invite the guru of the Oregon City Farmers Market, the queen, the queen of the market, to come forward. Jackie Hammond-Williams, who was so gracious with the committee to present us with a thank you. And so I've asked her actually to do that in person. I thought that it would be much more effective to come here and then also maybe give us a little market update. Thank you for your volunteer service.
Absolutely.
You should be... Oh, now it's... You can pull the other one over if it doesn't work.
Thank you. Yes. We're on. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to actually talk about my favorite subject, which is the market. And I'm here, obviously, to thank Mayor Norris and the commission for their support of the market and for the grant money that was awarded us earlier this year. We were very grateful and have put it to great use. But I also wanted to thank you all for coming to the market two weeks ago to hand out the market bags to those who are using plastic. And there are still people using plastic.
Amazing, isn't it?
Yeah. This day and age. But anyway, it was amazing, because after you left, we got this great line of people wanting to buy the bags. You know, they obviously saw you handing them out, and then they said, "Well, we need to buy them too." So thank you for that. That was a great idea and, you know, adds to the sustainability idea that we're trying to promote at the market. I also want to take this opportunity to thank members of city staff for their support over the years. We had, I think it was the Parks and Recs Jim, and I can't remember his last name. I don't think he's there anymore. Yeah.
Oh, Jim Rowell.
Yeah. He actually came up with the first logo of the market, which was the famous radish. We've kind of moved on since then. We're now a red tractor, but we wanted to get that in. And also for the Trail News. We always get a nice piece in the Trail News published, and we want to thank the city very much for that. That really helps. And also to thank City Works, who really do an excellent job and a hard job sometimes of putting our banners up and then taking them down, putting up somebody else's, and then rushing out and putting ours back up again. And sometimes ours is broken, and they've been gracious enough to take it down. And we've had it mended and they've put it back up again. And I know that entails a lot of work for City Works, so I wanted to thank them. And I also wanted to thank the city commission and Mayor Norris for shopping at the market. I see a lot of your faces regularly up at the market, and that means a lot to us. And we want to thank you for that. Recently, two weeks ago, in the midst of all that bag handout, we did our annual dot survey, which is a survey devised by Larry Levitt, OSU University, which is used in markets all over America. And we welcome people, customers, to come up to big pieces of paper on easels, and they take their dots and they put their dots by the answer. And what that tells us, it gives us an interesting picture of how the market is developing. We do custom accounts every week, and we've noticed that those are certainly up this year. But with the dot survey, we've noticed, and I can give you stats from... Stats when they're all typed up, maybe in a couple of weeks, that 60% to 70% of the people who come to that market actually frequent local businesses. So it shows that we are a destination, but we also... The goodwill, and that filters out into the community. And people who can't get products that are found at the market do shop locally. So I think that's a thing of importance. Also, we noticed that people spend between $20 and $40 at the market. And we also have a debit machine where people can bring up their debit card. We swipe it and give them our own market currency. And I often, at the end of the day, notice that people are swiping it and taking out hundreds of dollars, which amazes me. So I think people are really digging in and shopping well at the market. I better put my glasses on, because I can't see here. But, you know, I just wanted to give a brief update also that this year we've done things a little differently. We've welcomed local chefs into the market, and they've been doing chefs' demonstrations, which has really added a nice flavor to the market, literally. People can taste their samples, and the chefs certainly show them how to cook seasonal foods. We invited the master gardeners in, and they've been doing four months of bi-monthly food-growing workshops, which is something new for them. They've never done it before. And this is... We were sort of their trial, and they were so encouraged by the response that they're now going to take this to other markets within Clackamas County, and in fact, the metro region. And I'm really proud to say that 4H have finally come to market, and they are bringing their chickens and their eggs. So it's wonderful to see these young people. It teaches them all kinds of life skills, and it really was the mission of the market initially to encourage as much of the extension service programs to come to market. And the library, the Friends of the Library are there every week, and they... I think they do a fairly good trade. People love having them there and being able to go up and get these books, and it supports the library. And Family Food Educators, which again is the extension program that helps people preserve the foods at the market. And I think in this age of rising food costs, we... It's a good service to encourage people to buy extra and preserve for the winter and hopefully keep food prices down. And of course, our live music and our great coffee and our grass-fed beef and fish and cheese and eggs. And we've got three organic farms this year, which we're very proud of also. One is a local farm that has gone organic since they first came to us three years ago. So we started out with six vendors, three, four years ago now. And we ended up, two weeks ago, with 42 vendors and five nonprofits. So you can see we've really grown. So we couldn't have done this without support. And it takes a village to raise a market, and certainly the city's been part of that village. So we wanted to sincerely thank you, and we're going to give you this wonderful framed poster of the market with the city logo right there in the right-hand corner. And sincerely thank you all.
Thank you very much, Jackie.
Thank you very much.
I think one of the things that... Yeah. Has been impressive is the commitment of you and various other people that are volunteering their services down there. But not only to have the market, but to expand on the various things that are being offered. I mean, it's dramatically changed over the period of time that you've been there. And I think it just attract... It's more attractive seeing all these other activities that you've developed and the imagination that's gone into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did want to give a quick mention, of course. This could not be possible without the wonderful volunteers who show up at like quarter to 7:00 on a Saturday. One even drives from Canby, most to Oregon City, but we do have a Canby resident that helps out every day. And then we have members of the public that come at the end of the day to help us pack up, often in a very hot temperature too. So thank you for the volunteers.
And the market will be open until what date?
Oh, my goodness, yes. I'm going to get a plug in, because now it's looking absolutely gorgeous, and it goes right the way through to the end of October. So another six weeks.
Good. See you Saturday.
You know, Jackie, it's funny, I want to tell you this though. What I heard is that there's a lot of people out there that are caravanning from market to market around, spending their Saturdays or Sundays, actually going out and doing that. When we were up handing out the bags, there were several people there that were in a group that literally go around on the weekends to different farmers' markets in the close cities. So that's really cool.
There are market groupies. I mean, there really are. There are market groupies.
Apparently, they frequent the Oregon City markets. So there you go, yeah.
There goes the gasoline saving.
Well, maybe they're carpooling, and that would help. But we are attracting people from other communities. I meant to mention that. Lake Oswego, Westlin, Milwaukee, Canby, Beaver Creek, Gladstone. They're all coming now to... Well, not all, but quite a lot of them are coming to Oregon City.
You bet.
Thank you again for your dedication. Appreciate the update, and we appreciate the plaque.
And the good news is, there's three times as much space still left in the parking lot for expansion. Oh, sorry, county.
Okay. Moving along then to citizen comments, and I will ask our Commission President Damon Mayby to lead us through that. And I would ask that when you come up to the microphone, that you give your name and the city in which you live. If you've written clearly on the comment card, you have no reason to give your address. You can keep that private. So that... Commissioner Mayby.
Madam Mayor, we have a plethora of zero. So I pass the meeting back to you.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any items that should be moved to a different order? Not we will adopt the agenda as it is. We'll move on to general business, and the first is the second reading of Ordinance 7-1008, the adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, almost an over-two-year process. And this becomes an amendment to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and its auxiliary documents. Is there any comment or changes since we did the first reading at our last meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion for adoption, please?
I move adoption.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second up by Commissioner Tidwell. For the second reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is Ordinance Number 07-1008, the ordinance adopting the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and its amendments... Sorry, and amendments to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and its ancillary documents.
Thank you. Has anyone come prepared to speak to this this evening? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. For the benefit of the scouts in the room, anytime we pass an ordinance, which is the most, I guess you'd say rigorous kind of legislation that we pass, we must do it in two readings. So this is the second reading for that. And the first reading usually is the one that engenders lots of testimony and discussion. Yes, Commissioner Neely?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was it?
Well, I did too. Somebody else may have too. But anyway, I wanted to just inquire. I know we've got code amendments coming forward and so forth. And I believe it's with the Planning Commission now, or it's going to be soon. Do you have any projection? I know you gave us some dates, but those change depending on how it's going through the system.
Yeah. We're actually to our last work session on two important topics. One is the tree protection. That's probably the biggest one. And we're looking at tree protection, not only through our site development regulations, but a tree protection ordinance. And then also our Title 13 Code, which has to do with protection of wildlife and habitat. So we're hoping by the end of October, we'll be done with the hearings of the Planning Commission, and hopefully it will be to the City Commission in November.
I might inquire, although I know it's enacted, in terms of public participation, have members of the... Previous members of the Natural Resource Committee have been at any of these work sessions? Or do you know?
I don't know. I haven't been in every one, so...
Question. Commissioner West.
So will all the code amendments be at one meeting? Or are they going to be piecemealed as we work on them?
We're trying to get through the whole package. It's a big package. And one thing that we may want to do is have a work session just to go over...
Well, that'd be great.
Go over what they are.
Oh, yes, that's essential. That's a good use of work sessions. Okay, thank you. Next. Did you have something, Mr. Patterson?
Oh, I just... That action took about 30 seconds. But it's probably worth noting that that brings to conclusion over two years' worth of work, the involvement of many citizens and staff. And I just think they thank you as well as the efforts that you have put in there. So again, that's a second concept plan, and the last year we brought to completion now.
And I think, as we've mentioned at every meeting, it really is the best of citizen involvement. It's a question of what do we want for our community? And then it's the attempt to put together a plan that meets the needs of the community. And that's exactly what these two concept plans are.
And it's trying to address some of the things that our Metro Councillor was talking about in terms of how this region will grow.
And hopefully, it also fulfills the concept... New Look is now called the Greatest Place. So it's the same plan, but...
Oh, is that cheaper?
Yeah. About a year ago. So Making the Greatest Place. And so hopefully, Making the Greatest Place is what these two concepts are too for here in Oregon City. And all of the... We'll have to revisit all of those concepts in Making the Greatest Place, but we can take off a lot of them in the work that we're doing.
Unfortunately, it's only two down, one to go. We're still not done yet. But we've got a process for the process. So the growing pains of the first plan are much behind us, I think, and that's good.
Okay. Next, we have the first reading of an ordinance 8-1016, actually the first of two, annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the election results. This is a result of the election held in May, and needs to be officially... Those results need to be officially adopted by us. I have a motion for adoption.
Madam Mayor, I might mention too, as you go through this evening, and City Attorney's indicated, if you wish, you could do both readings now, because this is an action that has been approved by the voters, so...
Do them together, you mean?
No, no.
Do both.
Oh, one and two at the same time, okay. Which we normally do only because of emergency. Okay. Then may I have a motion for adoption of this first?
There is one change in Section 4, and I think it's at your place. I hadn't seen this before I came in tonight. Apparently, someone at the Secretary of State's office, after 10 years of adopting the same form, has decided that it might be better if we worded the relationship of the Tri-City Service District and this city differently. So I will recommend that we adopt, in place of the existing Section 4 and the noticed ordinance that I be authorized to read and that you include in your motion to adopt, the revised Section 4, which is in the email before you.
Okay. And we will do this in two motions.
Yes.
All right. Motion for adoption of Ordinance 8-1016 with the change in Section 4. Commissioner Mayby.
Well, just before I make that motion, I would also just state for those of you watching, this is an annexation that has already occurred. We're not adding new annexations to a ballot. It's back in May, so... And with that, I would make a motion for first reading of Ordinance Number 08-1016, annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City with the amended Section 4 of the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is Ordinance Number 08-1016, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City. Section 4 has been revised to read as follows. The city hereby concurs with and approves the annexing of the territory identified in Exhibit A into the Tri-City Service District when and if the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners desires to annex the territory into their district to the extent allowed by law.
Thank you. Is there a comment or discussion? Hearing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now for the second reading. Commissioner Mayby.
I would like to not have the second reading this evening. We did have language change, and I would like to just let the two weeks roll to have time for that new language to percolate through the system.
Doesn't have any... There's no time limit on... It's not a time-limited issue. Is there any objection to that?
No.
All right. We will hold this over then. Next then, we will have the first reading for Ordinance Number 8-1017, also an approved property annexation by the voters in May. And this will also be with the change in Section 4. You have a motion, please?
Yeah. I'll move for the first reading of Ordinance 08-1017 with the amended Section 4.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Mayby. For the first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is Ordinance 08-1017, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City. Section 4 is amended to read as follows. The city hereby concurs with and approves the annexing of the territory identified in Exhibit A into the Tri-City Service District when and if the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners desires to annex the territory into their district to the extent allowed by law.
Thank you. Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And I assume you meant your comment to include this one as well?
Yes.
All right, no objections, we'll move on then. Next, we have the approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Historic Properties LLC for nine point one four two acres-
Oh, one four two.
Nine point oh one four two acres of land for park and open space purposes. This is near the high school in an area that's very underserved, and we've been talking about purchase for a long time. So with that, Mr. Archer, our Community Services Director.
Mayor Norris and Commissioner, thank you. As you said, this is something that's been in the works for a long time, and I'm very, very pleased to be able to bring this forward to you for your consideration. The, as you indicated, the high school and what we call in the high school Glen Oak Road area has long been recognized as the city's highest need and priority for parkland acquisition. We do have a map up. On the screen is a highlighted map of the proposed property purchase. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee has supported and advocated for this area acquisition as its top priority for several years. The documented need for a park in this area dates back to the 1999 Parks and Rec Master Plan, and it's been reconfirmed, or reaffirmed in our recently adopted 2008 Master Plan update, five-year vision plan, as the highest priority for park area acquisition need in the city. Also, this is our top priority for extending our 2006 Metro Natural Areas Bond Measure Local Share Funds. This area has limited undeveloped, remaining undeveloped property in the targeted area, and this particular property, again, as shown on the map on the screen, is located in an ideal area for this particular target area. It has excellent road access, excellent pedestrian connection points to the surrounding neighborhoods, Oregon City High School and Clackamas Community College. The configuration and the topography of the property are very well suited for a park development. When developed, it'll provide a much-needed park for both the immediate neighborhood residents as well as it'll serve some greater community needs. I want to point out to you that the property purchase does include two different residents that we'd be acquiring. Both of these houses are in pretty decent condition, and they'd be able to continue to be rented for income in the time, until such time that we decide to do something else, develop the property, whatever. So we will bring, be able to bring in a little bit of revenue off of the property. I do want to mention a change regarding the future continuation of Myers Road development along the northern edge of the property, which is basically approximately centered on the property line to be shared with the adjacent property owner to the north. In your packets, we've inserted a replacement purchase and sale agreement. What we've done is we've deleted from the original packet Item four point two point D, which addresses, it was some language that we had originally negotiated and proposed, sharing the costs of building the roadway. However, after further consideration, we, in consultation with our City Attorney's Office and in discussion with the other party, we realized that this probably encumbered the city to build half the roadway before such time that we wanted, we would have wanted to do that. And by taking this language out, what we've basically done is allowed the normal process of the requirements of building the street improvements as the development occurs. Be most likely because of funding that the other property owner will develop first anyway, so we won't be encumbered to build our half of the roadway until such time that we're ready to develop the property. It's in the city's best interest, and Mr. Sullivan agrees with that, and he may or may not have something to add to those comments.
Not really.
Yes.
He's got it right.
Okay, thank you.
What section was it?
Four point two D.
Says covenant.
There's no D in this.
Yes, well, that's because it's been taken out.
It's been taken out.
I thought you said B.
Sorry, D as in dog, the new, the new one doesn't have that, and the old one does. The initial property, the property was initially offered by the seller to purchase at a price of, to sell to the city at a price of $2,206,647. We had a city appraisal report done, which valued the property at $1,825,000. However, the appraisal report did not incorporate some of the costs incurred by the seller involved in the overall transaction and lining up these properties essentially, nor did it reflect the actual price being paid by the seller for the property. And also, I think it's noteworthy that the city is saving some money because there are no real estate agent fees involved in this transaction. The final purchase price of $1,990,000 takes all of these factors into account and reflects what we believe to be a fair value for the property. Of course, fair value is a subjective term, and that has some flexibility to it, and we feel that we've come to an agreement from the original asking price that has, I think is good for the city. Again, I think this is an excellent parcel for us to acquire in this area. And with that, staff is recommending your approval of the purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $1,990,000 with Historic Properties LLC for nine point zero one four two acres of land for future park and open space uses.
Thank you. Before we discuss, may I call up Sean Dashler, who's signed up to speak and is a member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee? And I assume that you're going to tell us the importance of this in the plans that you have for the city.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the PrAC representative, I felt it really important to come to you this, tonight. I've been on PrAC for six years, and it's been the number one priority to buy parkland in the high school area for the entire six years. Another thing that is really important to me is that we're not just bringing you the first piece of property that came to PrAC. This is the third piece of property that we've discussed, the first one coming to you. Because with the others, didn't work out, we didn't think the prices were right, we've actually voted some down. And so that tells me that it's been flushed out, rather than just jumping at the first thing that we wanted to try to buy. And then, the second thing I wanted to point out is, in this area, right now, there's a lot of new homes going in. We get, Scott gets calls, we've had testimony at PrAC meetings from neighborhood individuals in this area, probably more than anywhere else in the city, needing parkland. There's one planned unit development right off of Glen Oak that, I believe it's 26 homes, has a one-acre park. Basically, they feel it's being overrun by about a thousand new homes coming in their area. So this is going to take up that need and serve the city well. So I just wanted to suggest that, to recommend that you vote in favor of this, is that I think it's the next major step in the city for the parks.
Thank you, yes, definitely a very underserved area, as identified in all of our plans. Thank you. Commissioner Neely?
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, for many, many years, has been looking for land in this particular area, and I'm glad that we're beginning to proceed on this, proceed on this. I wanted to just make one comment. When we were looking for land in that area, we were looking for a larger piece of land to deal with some of the issues that came from our waterfront master plan originally, which included large baseball fields and soccer fields. We don't have that size land, and I think it's really important, and I think you've implied it in your statement, that we look at this as a community park. There might be some other uses that we have too, but we have none in that area, and I think we have to look at some, something to really serve the community more than broader use sports activities and so forth, although that may be part of it. I don't think it should be a dominant piece of it from a personal standpoint.
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner Neely. I think that PrAC weighed in the fact that people have been paying STCs into this as they buy new homes for years, and they feel underserved by the city parks by not providing anything in that area. So that's the first number-one goal, is the citizens that live in that specific area. And with a nine-acre parcel, it's not a small neighborhood park, so there will be some advantage to being able to put in some larger recreation facilities. But you're right, we've looked all the way up to 20 acres, but I think at this point in time, with what's inside the city boundaries, we need to take what we can get as long as the price is right, buildable. We looked at one just before this that had a lot of wetland areas, which would be concerned during construction, and this basically has one small stream in it, and the rest is pretty much buildable, which is very significant. So the way, we can utilize the money we're spending on the acreage.
Thank you. Now, Scott, Mr. Archer? Glenn?
I just, I just wanted to mention, I just wanted to mention one thing that I neglected in my report. This is significant, this is the first, this would be the first purchase that we would apply some of our Metro bond money towards. We have $525,000 allocated from the Metro local bond measure that was passed in 2006 by the Portland Metro Area Region voters. So basically, that's paying for about a fourth of the property, and that's significant, and it's our first use of that funding.
Thank you. Commissioner Tidwell?
Sean, listen, you've been on PrAC for six years, I want to thank you for that. I mean, the commitment that you guys, it's so refreshing to sit up here as a city commissioner and know that if something is brought to you guys, you guys really roll up your sleeves, and you really get into the heart and the meat of the matter in regard to it. So when something comes to us from us, we know that you guys have spent hours upon hours, sometimes weeks, looking at something specific like this. And so it just, for six years, you've been on this PrAC, and you've, it's volunteer position, and from my perspective, I want to thank you for the hard work you guys do in regard to that. So we're a better community because of PrAC, so.
I agree, thank you.
Commissioner Mayby?
Oh, sorry, Dee, oh, I'm sorry.
Her hand was up first.
Commissioner West?
I also wanted to add that it was over 10 years ago that I was on PrAC, and I don't think that that whole neighborhood even existed 10 years ago. So for all those of you that are here, and we've spent all this time in the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and the Park Place Concept Plan, this is why we plan. Things change, and you know, the future does happen, and so.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayby?
Since we are using a large portion, more than half of our Metro money for this, is that going to limit what we can do with it? Because it's open spaces and natural areas, and very specifically, when they were outselling it and they were talking to us, it was not ball fields, it was not playgrounds, it was not... So is this just going to be a big, large green space? Or is it going to be an active-use area?
It'll be mostly an active-use park there. The local share portion of the bond, the majority of the bond measure that you're talking about is for basically just open space, natural area. The local share component, Metro, the way the language is written, Metro gives us a lot of flexibility locally. They basically said, as long as you're using it for parks purposes, we want to see you put it to the use that suits your community the best, and each community knows what that, what that use is. There is some element of that, but really, in our, in our IAG with them, our intergovernmental agreement, they've given us a lot of flexibility. There will be some passive-type development. Sean mentioned, there's a, there's a stream that goes through the southwest corner of the property. That'll probably be an incorporated feature with some of that type of use. There'll be some passive uses throughout the park. For the most part, it will be an active park, because that's what the, that's what the driving need is in this, in this. And that's not a problem with the Metro funding.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it being a park and us buying it. I'm just, well, I'm a little concerned about us spending this much of our Metro money on, you know, what's a, you know, what will effectively be a regular park. And, you know, and I understand, though, that we probably couldn't have met the purchase price without this, but I'm not, I'm not too settled with that.
And the other, the other piece of it is, this is, well, yeah, I guess, I understand your concerns, yeah. I'll just leave it at that.
Commissioner Neely?
Just, I mean, one way you can look at it, I assume that the, the other monies are, in fact, we've got over a million, I believe, that's coming in. This is roughly, a little bit more than half.
It's a little less than a million.
No, it's a little less than half. I am going to assume that the other procurements we're going to make are primarily for more natural areas. And also, I would assume that with that stream, that we might try to do some enhancement along that stream in terms of vegetative material that's appropriate to those kinds of conditions.
I would believe that that, that's what I was referring to. I think that would be part of the, part of the idea, is to develop and enhance that, make it a feature that people can, you know, appreciate it, but also, you know, protect it. I think it would fit the description that Commissioner Mayby is talking about.
And one thing to point out regarding the Metro funds is, back in 2006, PrAC came to the City Commission and brought you a list of priorities and goals, and that was number one at that point. And then the City Commission adopted the goals with this as their number-one priority at that point in time. So to me, that gives me a lot of confidence that we're keeping right in line with what we said our priorities are.
I think the community survey that was done when we updated our master plan most recently also indicated active uses in this area was a priority for citizens as well. So it seems to me that this is the coming together of many different processes and that fit. Commissioner Neely?
I do have a question. We have an Exhibit Two, it's the last page, permitted exceptions, but there doesn't seem to be anything there, so is that because there aren't any?
That is something, as our attorneys that I work with, actually, Rob Griffith in our attorney's office, indicated that that's something that is placed at the time before closing. So it's, it's just a formality that's put in before you close the property.
And so it's nothing that we need to worry about? Okay, very good.
May I have a motion then for approval of this purchase and sale agreement? Commissioner West?
I move approval of the purchase and sale agreement with Historic Properties LLC for nine and nine-plus acres of land for park and open space purposes.
Second.
Pardon? Oh, yes, with the revision of Item D deleted.
And I second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there a comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
I'm going to vote no. It's essentially symbolic, because I know it's passing already. But I, it's my concern with the Metro money, and that we might end up in some sort of issue down the road. But I definitely support a park, and, you know, if this is what it takes to make it happen, that's fine, but no officially.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four one. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please? A second?
Aye.
Moved by, not voting yes?
I am second to you, is what it said.
Wow.
Moved by Commissioner Tidwell, seconded by Commissioner Neely on the consent agenda. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. That concludes our business agenda this evening, and to communications? First, we'll start with the City Manager, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, I have three things, maybe just two, if one of you want to report on the Tri-City meeting last night, or I can. But first of all, I want to announce that it's my understanding the Governor will be here next Friday at one o'clock at the Abernathy Center, and I think that's in regards to the announcements on the Main Street designation. So if any of you are interested, if you'll let Nancy know, we'll make sure we can make reservations of that. I'm not quite sure how that works, so we'll still wait to get details on that.
Are we all invited? Is it a-
I would assume so, but I'm, maybe I-
I heard, I heard at the county luncheon today that you were giving the honors or helping.
Yeah, but we haven't really received any promo or anything, so it's, so who's putting it on, actually?
I don't know, we'll find that detail, I just want to kind of give you advance notice of that.
Okay, and it's not lunch, it's just-
I have no idea what we are.
No, it's not lunch.
All right, thank you.
What I heard is it's 30 minutes in and out for him, and however long the rest of the ceremony.
Actually, you know who I heard, I heard about it from a friend in Baker City, who knows more about it than I do. Interesting.
For what it's worth, I hear it's a press conference presentation, ceremony, he's going to give out-
Would you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you. All right, as our, our beloved Oregonian reporter, number two, said, that it is essentially a press conference style. So there'll probably be a lot of after effects from the announcement made that day. Thank you.
I want to mention also that your Subcommittee to Tri-City in regards to the diversion agreement met last evening, at the present time, we are talking about how Tri-City is to be reimbursed for providing the property for the improvements on the sewer plant site, for the, to handle the diversion that is part of this agreement. Right now, the discussion centers around a lump sum payment from CCSD Number One to Tri-City, and the discussion at that level is also that that would be set aside into a rate stabilization fund, either to hold out rate increases in the future, could be used for capital improvements as well.
And that's an amount of $4 million?
It's in the amount of $4 million.
Currently, it may go up.
Or, could go down, I suppose. It's my understanding that the West staff, Water and Environmental Services, is speaking with CCSD Number One this evening. If they are in conceptual agreement with that, that agreement will be brought forward to the City Commission for their review as well, before it goes on to the County Commission for approval. But I want to give you an update on that, and if you have specific questions, I'd be glad to try to get you information on that. The calculation, or at least they've arrived at the $4 million based on a return on investment calculation, as well as a portions added to that because of the investment that Tri-City has made in that plant and the effort they went through, because the Tri-City plant is the solution, and without that, CCSD would be looking at a much more costly solution, so.
And the diversion agreement is essentially the one that we had in our packets at the work session. So it hasn't really changed, but we did make two changes that we wanted to see into the document. So it was a really, it was a good, good discussion, I think, at the end of the day, though we believed, I think, all three parties-
It was a strong discussion.
It was a strong, intense discussion. And we got the questions pretty much answered and on the table, and I think we all agreed around the table that it was probably the best offer that, that we will get. And I, just to follow up on that, today, at the State of the County, which was a sellout, and the Abernathy Center, we-
It was full. They didn't sell out, it was full.
It was actually a sellout.
Oh, it was sellout.
Yeah, it was a sellout.
With the waiting lists.
Yeah. And anyway, you couldn't get in, if you wanted to. And we got a really wonderful acknowledgement of the role that Tri-City has played in helping to solve the sewer problems of, of the county. And it, it was really a very nice recognition by County Chair Lynn Peterson, so, appreciate that. Further comments on the Tri-City diversion agreement? Commissioner Neely?
Just a question, based on what you said. When we, when we get our, when we get our utility bills, we have a, we have a wastewater charge on it. Part of that, actually, is for Tri-City, is part of it is, is the city's component. And when you're talking about rate stabilization, are we talking about just rate stabilization in terms of Tri-City itself? That is, it's not, I think it stabilizes rates within the individual cities.
Right.
And it could be used for rate stabilization, or it could use, use for capital improvements, which someone else-
Still within Tri-City, not within the city.
2013 will, yeah, be determined.
Hasn't affected your overall bill, so.
And then I, I think beyond that, remember that after we completed the Community Partners process, my every Thursday meeting, the next step was to put together a provisional committee that would determine the next structure for the sewage treatment partnership. So that process is, is getting underway, and Larry and I, in fact, are meeting with the facilitator norm next week, to talk about our concerns, and our understanding of what needs to happen at that provisional committee. And Larry and I, or Larry or I, I think are serving as the representatives to that next committee. And it's unclear now whether that committee will start its work and complete it before the end of the year, or whether it will, or whether it will begin that work and complete it after the five-person commission is seated. So those are all things to be determined. Were there, were there any other comments on sewer? All right.
And I just want to mention, in closing this evening, that tonight, we are live on our video streaming, and I don't know if Ms. Ide can kind of show you a demonstration on that, if not, we can do that later date. But if you're at home, and you've missed part of the meeting, and would like to dial it up, you can still do that tomorrow, dial it up and watch the whole thing again.
Will you tell us how to do that?
Yes, I was gonna say-
Nancy, our City Recorder, Nancy Ide?
We will put a press release out very soon, to let the community know all about our new video streaming on the web, both live during the meeting, and on demand at any time following. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Nancy. I know you've been the architect of this process, and we appreciate the work to put it together. We are one of, I think, four cities streaming.
We're the third city in Oregon.
We're the third, I thought we were the fourth. Okay.
Milwaukee, you'll be the four.
The counties had it for a while, what?
Four.
Milwaukee's number four. Okay, we beat Milwaukee.
[laughing]
Sorry, Mayor Bernard. Further-
Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayby?
Briefly, the latest story with the, with the locks. When, I think, last we left, the locks were basically locked, and no money was to be found, and everything was looking gloom and doom. Since then, between all the pressure that we've put on our congressional representatives, and they have gladly passed on to the Corps of Engineers, and, and I will say, it's been friendly pressure, our congressional district members, Darlene Hooley, and both Senators Smith and Wyden, you know, Greg Walden, all those have really been pushing on this, so, so is that. But they came up with a little over a half million dollars to do the inspection that they need to unlock them. And so there, there should be, the end of this month, letting out the contract, and by around Halloween, you might start seeing barges show up in the river, and the gates coming out to do the inspection. Downside, because there's always downside with the darn lock story, is they have one gate that they're very concerned about, because over the last 20 years, they can't find any inspection records for it. It may eat up all that money, in which case, if they don't inspect all seven gates, the gates, the locks don't open, and they run out of money, then we get to go back and fight some more. Also, for those of you who haven't noticed, this happens to be an election year, and because of that, it is strongly suspected that there will not be a federal budget passed on time, because nobody wants to be the person who voted in that darn whatever. As has happened in the past, it generally means that it'll probably be after January 20th, when the new Congress is in place, before it is passed. That's good news and bad news. The good news is, both the House and Senate have put in $200,000 to run the locks this year. That's only enough to keep the locks from rusting more. It's not an operational amount, it's less than half of what they need. But it's a start. It means that it's in the budget, it's easier to raise something than it is to add it. But on the good news, the gooder news side, we got more money for the locks in 2008 than they have programmed for 2009. The way the federal budget works, when they haven't passed one, is you use the last-passed budget, divide it by 365, and every day that the budget isn't passed, that's how much money's allocated. So it's entirely possible, by the time they pass the budget allocating as the $200,000, we will have gotten more than that from the old budget. Hopefully, that means it'll add $200,000 to what we've already got, and not credit us $200,000. So the locks are still swinging in the breeze, and we need to make sure that we keep the pressure up. And, and for those of you that are going to the "I Want to Replace Darlene Hooley" conferences, keep the pressure up on all the candidates, and ask them, you know, what are you doing about the locks? What will you do? Are you pro or con? They're an asset that, you know, largest operating locks, seven-gated locks in the United States, longest operating, and all we need is one year it doesn't operate, and we lose that, and they're just some old locks. And it just seems ironic that at the time, when we're trying to fix roads, get dump trucks and everything off the highways, that they're ignoring the thing that makes the rivers function. And so, there's been some talk that if the locks were operating on a regular schedule year around, we could get over 700 dump trucks off the highways a day. So, well, a month, I mean. But, you know, that's that many fewer loads over the course of the year, that means extra years on all the highways, all the bridges, everything. So keep up the pressure, it's working, so turn the screws another notch, everybody.
Thank you for the report. Commissioner Tidwell?
Did you want to point this out beforehand?
Oh, she didn't notice.
That's us.
Oh, that's the stream.
That's the live stream.
That's very cool.
Doesn't look very lively.
It's delayed.
Because I was like, I'm not moving my hand.
Yeah, yeah, it's always like, thank you for that. Okay, Commissioner Tidwell?
I just want to announce that my next conversation with the Commissioner, is the first Tuesday of October, and that's October 7.
Which is a work session evening. Did you mean that?
I did not mean that. That's, that is correct, you are. We are gonna do it the following Tuesday, because that's right-
Which is the Candidates' Fair.
Which is the Candidates' Fair, huh?
So we'll be doing it the-
You might want to-
No, that's a very important conversation with the Commissioner, because it's about solar incentives and green collar jobs. So we are gonna reschedule that to an appropriate time, and of course, you can call me on my cell phone, which is 503-799-3121, and I will give you the accurate date. And I just announced my cell phone number over the air there, which may not have been the smartest thing, but I, I believe-
Don't worry, Bangladesh is dialing you now.
Right. Anyway, get ahold of me, and I'll have an accurate date that does not conflict with any of our scheduled activities, because that, that is right, that is. And we may do it, well, get ahold of me, and we'll go from there, so. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Others? Commissioner Neely?
Just one thing, probably should have announced it earlier, and, well, of course, we might have live stream on it. But the Big Look, the Big Look presentation is in Portland-
Dog, your voice is fabulous, isn't it?
Yeah, the Big Look presentation in Portland is actually tomorrow night, is at the University of Portland, 7 o'clock. I think three of us will probably be involved in a retreat, but other people might wish to go to it. I think it's the only Portland presentation that'll be done on, throughout the state.
And then they'll be rolling out their recommendations, so we'll have a chance to come in with them. I think we've commented here, we've commented through impact, so I think our input is there, but it would be very worthwhile, and it's a very interesting presentation, if others wish to, to attend. They've, they've done really excellent work, and I know there was a nice article in the Oregonian this morning that covered the preliminary work. Others?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I've got a few things. Commissioner West and Commissioner Neely and I will be attending the County C4 Retreat, which is the Clackamas County Coordinating Council, and all the cities and special districts of the county will be getting together to talk about some of the pressing issues that we can do better together than separately, like what do we want to do about growth, what do we want to do about urban real reserves? We'll probably be talking about water sewer, and definitely sustainability. So we'll be giving you a report on, on that. Then we have the Willamette Falls Stakeholders, this is the group that Westland and Oregon City Mayors are convening, that involves all the stakeholders of, of the Willamette Falls area. And we have a, a group of students coming from the University of Oregon, that are doing what's called a studio, that we are funding. Basically, the tourism, Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department is funding this first studio, and they'll be looking at the, the gateways, the signage, the, how, how that Falls area can be a cohesive, educational, and interpretive element. So that's, that's pretty exciting. I think they'll be coming up here next, next week. Then, we have the Safety Fair on Saturday. Our Fire District will be in the Danielson Mall area, and it's always a lot of fun. You can get to go through the big, the big equipment, learn how they do rescue and fires, and a lot of good giveaways, too, so it's a really fun event. And then, League of Oregon Cities will be happening next month, between meetings, I think, and-
Yes.
Commissioner West and I will be representing you at, at that meeting. We also just recently had our Oregon One, Oregon City 150th Committee. In fact, how we're celebrating the state's birthday next year may be the best celebration that any city in the state will be having, actually. We have so many events planned, from a community-wide picnic on July 25th, which will also involve a historic-
Ballgame.
Baseball game, as they played it in 1866, is that the right date? I believe that's the right date, complete with uniforms, and the rules of the day. And I understand that the baseball bat and the baseball that they used are actually very different, and they have to be specially made for this event. So it should be fun. Community potluck with band, and, and all kinds of interest, you know, interesting things happening that day. We also will be doing a Take Care of Oregon Day, along with the rest of the state, on May 16th. We will be, we have a website, oc150.com, and that will have all of the activities that we will be participating in. The high school is very excited, both the charter school and the high school, very excited about doing community projects that, that leave a legacy, which is part of the whole Oregon 150th program. So watch this space. We will be having a lot more rollouts on, on the activities. The committee is very, it's large, active, and really has a lot of ideas. Commissioner?
Along with ribbon cutting for our new City Hall, hopefully.
Um, maybe.
Yeah, we'll see. Yeah, we'll see. We will also have a brochure that will be 150 things to do in Oregon City in 150 days. And that, that brochure will, will really be a fun one, to look at the variety of activities that, that are happening throughout our city, some ongoing, and some just especially for this year. Commissioner West?
One final note. I'd like to thank everybody who has come down to the concert series at Liberty Plaza all summer. We've ended, or finished up this past Friday with, gosh, I couldn't tell you, 1,000 to 3,000 people, I, I don't know, what do you think the guess is?
It was a huge crowd, and a success, uh, uh- Very sad, though.
Yes, a success on many levels, and it really has helped a lot of our downtown businesses who are serving food and drinks down there. It was just a win-win for everybody, a lot of fun. So until next year, that's it.
Yep, sort of sad to see all those.
Yes.
If there are no further announcements, we are adjourned. Not quite anyone. Didn't get it quite under the hour. Well, not too bad, huh?